I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll move on to roll call.
Before you go on, I want to remind you all, and I have it on the agenda, but make sure that you are stating that, yes, you're attending remotely and the city, county, and state in which you are attending from. All right, I'll let you call it rule about.
Okay. Roll call. Chair Pietrowski.
Yep, here, attending remotely from Lathrow Village, Michigan, in Oakland County.
Vice Chair Hammond.
Present, attending remotely from Lathrow Village in Oakland County, Michigan.
And Secretary Thompson.
Here, attending remotely from Ann Arbor, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Board Member Fabs.
Present. Robert Fabs attending remotely from Lathrow Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
And Board Member Huliza.
Here, attending from the lovely village of Lathrow, Oakland County, Michigan.
Board Member Cantor. You're on mute, Mark. I mean Bruce.
Here, attending remotely from Lathrow Village in Oakland County, Michigan.
Thank you. And Board Member Stansberry.
Here, attending remotely from Lathrow Village in Oakland County, Michigan.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the agenda itself. Anyone has any comments or questions, we'll entertain, otherwise we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Those in favor?
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Board Member Fabs. This is the approval of the agenda roll call.
Aye.
Commissioner Hammond.
Yes.
Sorry, Board Member Huliza.
Yes.
Board Member Cantor.
Yes.
Chair Pietrowski.
Yes.
Board Member Stansberry.
Yes.
And Board Member Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carry to approve the agenda.
Okay, so we'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes. And we have several listed here. We will start out with item A, study session of October 2020. So if you obtain any questions, comments, corrections, otherwise we'll entertain a motion to approve as written.
Make a motion to approve the study session minutes from October 20th of 2020.
Second.
Those in favor? Roll call.
Roll call. Board Member Hammond.
Yes.
Board Member Huliza.
Aye.
Board Member Cantor.
Yes.
Chair Pietrowski.
Aye.
Board Member Stansberry.
Yes.
Board Member Thompson.
Oh, yes.
And Board Member Fabs.
Aye.
Motion carry.
Okay, so move on to approval of the meeting minutes for the regular meeting of October 20th, 2020. If there are no comments, corrections, or questions regarding it, we'll entertain a motion to approve those as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from October 20th, 2020.
Second.
Those in favor? Roll call.
Roll call. Board Member Huliza.
Aye.
Board Member Cantor.
Yes.
Chair Pietrowski.
Yes.
Board Member Stansberry.
Yes.
Board Member Thompson.
Yes.
Board Member Fabs.
Aye.
And Board Member Hammond.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Okay, we'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes of the Joint City Council DDA Planning Commission, held on November 30th, 2020. As with the previous, we'll entertain any questions, corrections, or comments, and otherwise we'll look for a motion to approve as written.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the joint meeting of November 30th, 2020 as written.
Second.
Those in favor? Roll call.
Roll call. Board Member Cantor.
Yes.
Board Member Pietrowski.
Yes.
Board Member Stansberry.
Yes.
Board Member Thompson.
Yes.
Board Member Fabs.
Aye.
Board Member Hammond.
Yes.
And Board Member Huliza.
Aye.
Motion carry.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is the public comment portion of the agenda regarding items that are not listed on the agenda. If there is anyone from the public who wishes to address the commission, we would entertain that at this moment. Okay. Not hearing any. Think we'll close this item or this portion of the agenda and move on to new business. So first item of new business, we have the public hearing for the R1 district amendment, parking as a special land use. The issue of parking as a special land use has been discussed in the past here in Lathrow Village and was again a part of the discussion in our previous meetings, and we are conducting a public hearing this evening to basically get comments from the public on the proposed the proposed amendments. So is, if the city planners are going to, I guess, initiate with any sort of introduction of those of the amendments, we would entertain that at this time.
Great. As Chair mentioned, we have discussed this as a planning commission for quite some time. And in fact, we were discussing the meeting of City Council Planning Commission and the DDA just last month. Prior to that, this is something that the city has been considering probably since 2008 with the master plan that really began the identification of a major area. It had an expansion area at that time in 2008, the master plan, and it suggested that parcels adjacent to the Southfield Road frontage parcels might be used to facilitate redevelopment in the corridor. In 2015, we updated that to be very clear that that wasn't necessarily intended to be an expansion area for development of buildings, but rather it would be an expansion area for parking. So the intent of this language is to allow, oh, good, thanks, Reeve, sorry, we were doing a tag team, or Reeve's doing the PowerPoint here. The things that I forget to say, so section 5.13, we require all uses to have adequate parking, and we have standards in ordinance by how many spaces are required for each use. But we also offer some alternatives to parking on site, and we've been trying to incorporate this over the years in recognition that the, one of the factors that limit the ability for people on Southfield Road, property owners to redevelop are the size of the lots, particularly the depth of the lots. So we've been trying to identify alternatives. So one of them is that parking can be accommodated within 500 feet of a commercial use. So it doesn't have to be right on site, it can be within a short walk. We allow for shared parking between uses with a different peak operating time. And in two districts, the Village Center District and the Mixed Use District, property owners can install on-street parking in the public right-of-way to satisfy up to 25% of the required number of spaces. And there's also another one that I didn't highlight in here, but where the planning commission can reduce on its own some of the required parking that's provided on-site. And in addition to that, city councils also license public alleys adjacent to commercial uses for parking. So we're trying to provide some alternatives. One of the additional opportunities that we've identified are through some of the lots that are immediately adjacent to the MX District. And you can see a little bit, well, we can go back and look at that, but where those, Reeve, if you want to go back, that's okay. So these are, not to suggest that these are going to transform into additional parking, but this is a representation of where that could go and what that would look like and what the ordinance would require when we say that the local line that abuts the mixed-use district, that it shall be adjacent to a public alley, or it'll have to share north or south lot line, parcel that's currently developed within 150 feet of way. From a practical standpoint, it's most likely that, if you want to go to the next slide, that these are going to be more likely than not vacant lots as we get, as we look at this from a practical standpoint. The cost associated with acquiring a parcel and using it, that that would need to be something to be rolled into the cost of redevelopment. So we have here outlined the standards that are associated with allowing parking to be as a special land use. Those which are 300 feet would be noticed, notified, and would have the opportunity to talk about concerns or their support. We have stated in here that there's certain architectural standards that are going to apply, which suggests that we are asking for a redevelopment to be of a high quality and to line, be in alignment with the city's vision that's expressed. And so we've got certain standards there associated with that. We've also said that oh, Reeve's sending me a message that my, that my sound's breaking up. Is it, is it difficult to hear me?
It's a little challenging, Jill.
Oh, I wonder if it speaks to the computer situation I have. Well, I'll just let Reeve finish up then. I think she's got better sound than I do. Reeve, does that work for you?
Okay, I need to unmute myself first. Can you guys hear me?
Thank you. I did that in another meeting today, too.
Just a quick overview, the amendment is supposed to be only to certain R1 parcels, like we mentioned before. You know, we have three prerequisites, eligibility criteria that for R1 parcels where the parking can be, the parking can be expanded. One, you know, when they share a lot line that abuts the mixed-use district and when, if they're adjacent to a public alley, adjacent to a mixed-use district, and three, if they share a north or south line with a parcel that is currently developed as a parking lot, as a R1 parcel that is currently dolloped as a parking lot and is within 150 feet of the Southfield Road right-of-way. We have about seven requirements that were listed in the draft amendment, each targeting a different criteria. The first one, location, we discussed, the eligibility is that it's not just, we just want to expand parking, but they also should demonstrate substantial investment to be made into redollopment. That could include ground floor users to include retail restaurant or residential users, and then, you know, they have to meet the higher architectural standards of Village Center District. And there are some certain setbacks that are required to be maintained from the residential district. And the alley should be dolloped so as to maintain the north-south public alley where one exists. And we are limiting the parking lot from using it as an outdoor sales display or storage. So we prepared, we updated this, this exhibit that kind of demonstrates the concept of what we're trying to achieve here. It's not just about expanding, expansion of parking, but it's also about creating that buffer and protecting the residential users. So the first, the requirement is that they should have a minimum of 10-foot setback from the adjacent residential district. And within that setback, the amendment proposes to require a six-foot tall screen wall and a row of evergreen trees. The, we were recommending a combination of deciduous and shrubs earlier, but then after reconsidering the width and giving the tree enough space to grow and maintenance, we felt, we revised it to a row of evergreen trees. And the parking lot, we heard the planning commission discussion at the last meeting, we understand that we're not too keen on having an entrance into the parking lot closer to the residential district, so we revised the draft saying that only one entrance into the parking lot is allowed unless the planning commission allows a second entry or exit into the parking lot, and that will be allowed if the applicant demonstrates. That will be allowed if the applicant demonstrates that, you know, it is required and it's and it will maintain necessary distance from the residential districts and some other protections built in. And this exhibit kind of takes into consideration, like if we have a 48,000 square foot of building with ground floor of retail office use and upper floor with residential units, then you would require about 120 spaces, and this is a wish, like an approximate layout we would get. This is a perspective, a different angle of the same concept we talked about with the screen wall and the evergreen trees and a 42-inch buffer wall near the side street. You know, if so tonight, I think the only major differences we made are with regards to the, from what you've seen before are the landscape requirements for the, converting the deciduous to evergreen and then eliminating that one additional entrance into the parking lot. I think we can open it up for discussion and see what you, what you guys, if you have any comments, suggestions.
I have a comment. This is Jason.
Before we go to the public, or open up the planning commission member comments, we should open up the public hearing, take any public hearing comments and then close that, and then it'd be appropriate for commissioners to comment, ask questions.
Okay, so, so let's, let's officially open the, the public hearing portion of the meeting. I assume the rules for addressing the commission are the same. We give participants, what is it, three minutes? Scott, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, to just give their name, address, and identify, you know, or give us their, their, their take on this proposed amendment, and we will take it under consideration.
And I'm not seeing any, other than our two guests, Lonnie and Ramil, we don't have any, I don't see any public waiting either, so.
Okay. Would it be appropriate to, at this point, close the public hearing session and address questions from the commission itself?
Yep, that would be the next step.
Okay, so let's officially close the, the public hearing portion, and we'll move on to discussions amongst the planning commission for any of the information that's been, I guess, shared here and maybe modified from some of our previous input that we've given.
This is Jason. So this looks great. It's consistent with what we had talked about. I like the updates based on the feedback we gave last time we looked at this. One comment I got from a couple of residents that I'd spoken with is about the, the number of parking spaces required, and I think that this is addressed, I just want to clarify it. The comment was, you know, if, if the ground floor is for retail office and restaurant, and it obviously is, those, those types of businesses will require more spaces than something that's a residential or a, an office that doesn't have clientele, right? Like a business office that just has a single occupant or maybe two occupants, something like that. So based on what's described here on the right side, it looks like that's accounted for, that obviously upper floor units that don't have as much turnover traffic don't require as many spaces, but I think I also saw in the commentary and in the language of the, the proposed zoning ordinance, that the, the planning commission can adjust the number of required parking spaces based on a review of a site plan, given the intended use of the, of the units inside of one of these buildings.
Yeah, so you, oh, yeah, yes, you have, you have the discretion to reduce up to 25% the parking requirements for developments within the Village Center.
So the only other question I have about this is, so let's say we have an applicant that comes with a site plan that indicates residential on the upper floor. Right, and we make a decision about assigning or reducing the number of required parking spaces based on that. And then at some point after site plan review and approval, that changes. And then the proposed use for the upper floor changes to something that's like flex, that may require more parking spaces. Do we, do we require the applicant to reapply for variance from the, you know, parking restrictions or parking requirements when that changes?
That would be, that would be a change of view, so they would need to come back for amended site plan approval. And since, you know, the situation you just described would, and change the intensity of the use, then they would very likely be required to provide for that additional parking, whether it be on-site or through something like this.
Okay, great. Yeah, so I, I think the only thing is, you know, it's something for us as a, as planning commissioners to keep in mind when we see site plans that may have these types of requests for variances, if the upper floor use is intended to be a mix, right, or variable, right, that we need to keep that in mind when we're making decisions about whether or not to support reductions or approve reductions in the number of parking spots. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. And, and I, this is Mark Pietrowski, I have a question with regard to we've, we've made, the sketch here makes accommodations for how we treat the boundary with the adjacent residential property, which would not necessarily be affected. And in this case, the sketch goes street to street. The graphic is omitting a sidewalk on one side, and I'm sure that's just an oversight and, you know, for the purposes of, you know, the graphic, but if we had a situation where a single, a single lot was acquired for this purpose and the lots are of different size, my assumption would be that the similar setbacks would then apply to the side as well, wherever it's a budding, whether it's a side of a lot or if it's a portion of the back of a lot. And, and the planning commission would have some discretion as far as how they would interpret how those conditions should be treated.
If I'm understanding, you're right, if I may. So you're saying if the lot line is not straight and it kind of like zigzags, then, you know, the buffer and the requirement would abut the lot line, then that is correct.
Yeah, that's the way I would interpret it, or would, would attempt to apply it based on how we're describing it for, at, at the current time.
Yes, we did not say it's a rare setback. We said the, the property line abutting residential, I believe, that's what.
Okay. And I may not be remembering this correctly, but I thought references would have been made in the, in the document to the Southfield Road corridor, but it occurred to me with both 11 Mile and 12 Mile, if those areas are affected and a lot that's adjacent to a commercial business is, is impacted, then we're talking about a lot that then abuts or fronts two, two streets. And the prospect of, of lots potentially being changed to parking that is now somebody's front yard. And I just wanted to understand if this was intended specifically for the Southfield Road corridor, or if we also have limitations on 11 Mile, 12 Mile.
The current, the draft that's written right now, it, it only refers to Southfield Road right-of-way. It says if anybody's trying to acquire more residential parcel, parcels to expand the parking lot or then it should be within 150 feet of the Southfield Road right-of-way. So you, so you're, if I'm understanding you right, you're suggesting that whether would that apply to the residential R1 properties abutting mixed-use districts along 11 Mile?
Correct. I saw them on the graphic there, those, those areas highlighted, so that made me wonder. Probably made Bruce wonder, too.
That is a good point. We can
I think to be Would you like this, yeah, I mean, would you like that to be excluded only for MX parcels that have Southfield Road frontage?
I, the thought occurred to me that that might be something for the commission to consider. Personally, I think, I think it is. I think there's another level of, of possible intrusion if suddenly, let's say, a, a house disappears, or several houses disappear along a block, especially along the 696 corridor where they suddenly have parking and the traffic and everything in front of them, which seems to me to be detrimental.
Something else, too.
Yeah, the noise as well as, as a buffer for those who are now exposed to that. So 12 Mile less so, but it's the same situation. And I saw the language for Southfield Road, and I said, okay, that's, that's, that's fine. I just, when I saw the graphic here, I wanted to make sure that I, I understood that as being a, you know, that it's not broadened to cover those lots as well.
Look, we have two options here, so we either exclude those parcels abutting mixed-use district along any other streets, roads other than Southfield, or we, we extend the 150-feet requirement to all roads.
We can do, we could even do both.
Or
Right, right. I'm not immediately
Make sure we're really clear.
Yeah, I'm not immediately imagining what, how that would, would affect, yeah, right, if it, if it's to cover like any loopholes, I'm not really clear exactly what the loophole would be if we say if it's just 150.
Yeah, the intent behind that originally was that we didn't want to like have things jumping over and parcels jumping over, so now, also, I noticed that the version that we have in your packet is missing the text that said there shall be a maximum of one entryway to the parking lot. That was an addition to item under 4.16, number three. Maximum of, and we can add this, and I think I'll, I'll Maximum of, and we can add this, and I think I'll, I'll confirm with the city attorney that that's acceptable. If I read the language in, it's not, it's shown in the graphic, and we've discussed it. And it was in the version that was to the planning commission and city council on the 25th, but it's not the version that's in your packet. And that was number three, the last line, "There should be a maximum of one entryway to the parking lot. Additional entryways shall be subject to the planning commission's approval, provided that the applicant demonstrate that the additional entryways will improve site circulation and does not impact the adjacent residential properties." And then, under 6B, "The 10-foot setback area between the screen wall and residential property shall be landscaped," and our change was, "with a row of evergreen trees. The type of planting, minimum size, and spacing requirement shall be subject to approval of the planning commission." And those were the only two changes. Oh, also, the parking areas are setback a minimum of eight feet from the street right away. I think we had five initially, but we made it eight so that there would be more room for screening. If you find those inclusions to be acceptable, then maybe we can just refer to that. It's the ordinance dated 11/25/2020. And I apologize for the confusion on that.
Okay, if there are any other additional comments, we'll entertain it at this time. If you want to make, I guess, a clear statement of, I guess, bringing the documentation into coordination or coordinated together so that it more clearly demonstrates what we're looking to amend. We can entertain a motion to recommend this to city council? Any concerns on anybody on the commission on the lack of public attendance for comment on this? I'll throw that in there, since there's a bit of a period of silence here.
I'm, I'm not concerned about that, Mark. Maybe it's just because I had an opportunity to talk with a couple of different residents who read the proposed language and asked me questions about it, and I mentioned them on the call here. Tells me that at least some people who were interested took notice and, you know, were aware of it, even though they didn't attend the meeting tonight. Some, some folks read it.
Okay.
I did, you know, I heard Jill ask the question, but Scott, I didn't hear if you answered if the modifications she mentioned to the language, if.
Yeah, as long, as long as the correct version, I guess, because it sounds like it maybe was just a mistake on what was submitted to this, this body, as long as the correct version is, is what's transmitted to council for final approval, then, then I see no issue with it.
Great.
Any, any requests by any of the commissioners to see a revised, a revised copy of this before recommending approval?
I'm comfortable with what was in the presentation, and what was described by Jill, and is now recorded in this Zoom session.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion to recommend the approval of this amendment to the city council, and then move on to the next item on the agenda. So, well, let's put it.
I'll make that motion to approve the updated zoning ordinance language, given the, including the, the adjustments that Jill mentioned, and to recommend this for approval by city council.
Second, the motion.
Okay, those in favor, roll call?
Roll call, Chair Pietrowski?
Yes.
Board member Stance Berry?
Aye.
Board member Thompson?
Yes.
Board member Fobbs?
Aye.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board member Julieta?
Yes.
Board member Cantor?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you.
See you all. Happy holidays, and we'll see you in January.
Happy holidays, Jill.
Thanks, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next item of new business, which is the site plan review for 27215 Southfield Road, life center adaptive reuse.
Right, so we have here, wait, so we have Ramil Yusufov and Lonnie Zimmerin here for, to talk about their plans for, or Ramil's plans, I should say, for 27215 Southfield Road. It was the former staffing, staff training facility, which Ramil acquired first. I will let Ramil and Lonnie talk about their project, and then I'll have Sri go through our, go through our comments.
Hello, everybody.
Good evening.
Ramil Yusufov, joining from Southfield, Michigan, Oakland County.
And I'm Lonnie Zimmerin from Sigal Tumel Associates Architects. We've been working with Ramil on this property for the site plan and the building interior renovation that he's got planned. I can start basically by describing it, and maybe Ramil can, can offer some other information to flesh out what I'm saying. I guess what we've got here is a, a, an adaptive reuse to the building and the site to make this an MRI and holistic medicine facility. And I guess Ramil can better talk about the specific use than I can. So Ramil, why don't you give the planning commission the overview of that?
The goal is to make this building a holistic life center, where we can introduce a lot of alternative ways of healing, including diagnostics, and then offering a whole bunch of different services that will, you know, benefit our neighborhood, and from things like acupuncture, or prenatal massages for pregnant ladies that have, have a hard time, to maybe, you know, selling different types of herbs and lotions, and different types of things that will, you know, have a alternative way from actual medical that, that is currently used in many ways. So that would be the goal, to introduce something a little different to the community.
As far as the development of the site, there is no external changes to the building planned, other than the addition of a exit door, which will lead to the MRI facility, as well as a reconstruction of the main building entrance, also facing towards the back parking lot, with a, with a handicapped access ramp. And this shows up on the sheet as a site two, that was part of the drawing package. Site one is the existing site. Site two is the development of the site. Right, and so you see the sheet, the drawing on the right, which indicates the existing building, and the parking lot size is staying the same. However, the parking is being reconfigured, and you'll see that there is an MRI, a mobile MRI unit, which is indicated where the cursor is, just to the west of the building. And that's going to be approximately there two days a week for the beginning. And Ramil can explain further, but initially, until there's enough building or patronage or patient use, the mobile unit will be used, and ultimately the MRI will be inside the building, and there won't be this in existence at all. But in the short term, this is pulled in by a truck, and it's going to be operated typically during the allowable hours in the ordinance. And the, the way it functions is, there is a door which is opposite the stairway, which you can see, or the platform and stairway. Where, that's where we're adding the door, which is on the right side of the mobile unit. And it's up further, if you move the cursor up just a little bit further, like in the middle of the, in, in the middle of the MRI mobile unit there, that's the stairway there. And there's a door opposite the stairway, and there's a handicap platform there. And the, the MRI unit has ability to have handicap access with the platform, and non-handicap with the stair leading to the interior of the unit. And we've reconfigured the parking from what's there now, to add some parallel parking along the west end of the property, as well as you've got the parking that you can see on the north. And, and then the handicap, which is in the southeast, which is the closest area to get handicapped access to the parking there. The, when, the evaluation that Jill and Sri had written goes through a number of items, and I guess what I'd like to do is just kind of go through those items, and we can talk about those. And then, if you have questions, obviously, we'll be happy to answer them. I guess before I start on that, though, you can see at the bottom of the right-hand drawing, the entry drive off of Sunnybrook Avenue has been widened, and this is to allow easy access. This is flipped on its side right now. If it were, if it were counterclockwise up, you would see what I'm talking about. But wherever the cursor is, the, is the entry off of Sunnybrook, and that's why we're widening it. What's interesting, though, is Ramil actually had a test run done by the mobile MRI unit, and they were able to enter this without the widening at all, even though this is, this widening pattern shown, this truck pattern shown, is off of the actual turning radius charts, but the auto turn. But it actually was able to function just as it is now. But we are proposing to widen it, and we'll have engineering drawings which will show this. So again, in going through the, the list of things that Jill had mentioned, some I've already talked about here. Number one is the use. Ramil talked about that. The, I've talked about some of the site changes. Number three is the hours of operation. Basically, approximately seven to eight, but it will not exceed the ordinance requirements. Noise level, number four, we're less than 70, we're actually less than 60. I submitted this with the application package. The parking lot design in number six, the parking space access conflict. I, I guess I'd like to comment on number six, where it's indicated that they see a conflict in that corner, which is the northwest corner up there. In reality, there is enough parking dimensionally. The way we've got it drawn, it actually does work dimensionally, with the 20-foot dimension on each end of the, which, on each side of the island. So we can park 90 degrees on each side there and comply. And although this was pointed out, they'd like to see one of the spaces removed. Functionally, it does comply. So whether you choose to have one removed or not, will obviously do whatever's necessary. But I don't think it's really the conflict that is pointed out here. Number seven, required parking, we meet the parking requirements as far as the number of spaces is drawn. We've got it at 23, it requires 21. And what we've done is we've, as requested, we've taken the building area, and we've added to it the usable area of the mobile MRI unit. The big trailer is not all for people. A lot of, most of it is equipment. It's two, about 200 square feet at most for the operator in the actual MRI for the patient area. So we've added that to it, and that totals a requirement of 21 spaces, of which we are providing 23. If we do lose one of them at the corner up there, then it becomes 22 spaces. So we still are in compliance with the ordinance requirements. Number eight, the loading, the comment as far as the loading, we anticipate the shared loading with this MRI pad. It's a concrete pad that we're putting on here, that it's required by the MRI unit. It's going to be 20 feet wide by roughly 58 feet, I think, 58 feet, 8 inches long. And since it's not going to be used for this MRI unit on a full-time basis, we feel that we can plan any loading, which it's, there would be no truck, large truck access to it, because there's no large truck loading here. This is all one, one-user building, and they're just, are not large trucks. Occasionally, they're going to get a UPS or FedEx truck, but that's probably about the largest one that's going to be here, and they're just in and out in a minute anyways. So we would like to use this as a combined loading and MRI parking area, this concrete slab that we're putting in. Number nine, traffic and circulation. It was a drawing that Sri just put on the screen a moment ago. That's just showing that it does meet the, or we do have the ability on the site to have the trucks circulate in from Sunnybrook, in and out onto Southfield Road, through the north driveway there. Nine A, the comment about the road commission for Oakland County. There's an existing drive-through that goes back to when this was a bank. Now, at this point, we're not planning on doing anything with the building exterior. We're just going to leave this in place. The drive is, in all likelihood, not going to function. It doesn't, it's not really used now, because there's not, or hadn't been used, really. I mean, it, it just doesn't function. So we proposed to put a couple of do-down entrance signs there, and then just put some parking blocks on, on the west side of the sidewalk there. and then just put some parking blocks on, on the west side of the sidewalk there. It was commented that the signs are in the Oakland County right away. Well, it's an easy job just to take the signs and put them on the west side of the sidewalk and then not in the right of way anymore. So our goal is at this point, short term, not to remove this driveway. So we hope that the planning commission will agree just to let it stay there. We're putting, there are no signs there now and there, to my knowledge, there haven't been signs there ever. Or at least nothing that we can see historically. So, but we're just going to make sure that this driveway is not really available by putting the parking blocks there and the signs. Waste and rubbish, number 10. The, all the trash pickup will be with a couple of residential type trash picked up by the normal city pickup. No dumpster, no large facility. And the trash will just be tucked in there against the building, probably in the northwest corner over there on the, on the concrete pad. Landscape and screening. We've indicated some landscaping, which right, right now on the southwest part of the building is kind of a gravel area. We're going to remove a part of it. We're going to add the ramp that you see at the entry to the building. It's just north of there. We're going to put stairs and a handicapped access ramp. The ramp that's there now, if any of you have been by the back of that building, that doesn't comply with, with code at all. So what we want to do is bring this into compliance with ADA with proper handicapped access to it. Number 12, the screen wall. This, this is a question that really has to go to the planning commission, how you want to deal with it. Right now, there are two DTE poles with guy wires that are basically against the west property line. If you look at my drawing, the site two, Sri, if you can put that back up please, we have it graphically shown. You see, there are areas, if you start at the north property line, we are showing the northwest corner of the site. We've got a wall that extends south from that northwest corner until we hit the guy wire. There's no room to build a wall on the property line. Right now, there's a chain and fence on the property line. There's no room to build a wall with the guy wire and pole. So what we're showing are arborvities at that location. Then we pick up the wall right next to the pole and go south again until we hit the next guy wire. And then we have more arborvities. And then you see a cluster of trees shown. Those cluster of trees are really, they're extending on both lots, both the residential lot to the west and our lot. And they're very nice, hate to see them taken out. So we propose to leave them there. And then we're showing continuing arborvities to our south property line from that point. Now that all having been said, Ramil has been talking with the residential property owner to the west. And his property goes from, you can see a fence line, an east west fence line. It's roughly at the edge of the first, at the north edge of the, of the first wall that we've got there, just above where the detail cut line is drawn. And his property goes all the way south, obviously to Sunnybrook. And he, Ramil's been talking to him. And he's made it clear to him that he doesn't want the wall at all. And I guess I referenced the letter that I presumed it's Suzie forward to all of you.
I, I guess I just, I just emailed it to everyone. I can share it.
I can read it if you'd like.
Yeah, let me, I can share it too. Let me share it.
On the screen?
Yeah, if I can. Screen share. Voila. So.
Would you like me to read, read through it or would, would all of you just prefer to read what's on the screen? I can read it. Maybe that would be the easiest way to.
It'd be easy if we just read it.
Did you say you would read it or I should?
Yeah, we can, we can read it.
Okay, sure.
Let me know when you want me to scroll down. Actually, right now, zooming out a little bit for you guys. Like I said, I've, I emailed this to all of you, not too long ago. So you also have it in your inboxes.
Suzie, how'd you receive this letter? Was it an email from the homeowner or?
It was a email, it was an email from Ramil with this attached to it.
I guess the only comment I would have is I'd want to get confirmation some way, shape or form.
On, on the bottom of it is now showing up on the screen. It's signed.
Yeah, it's signed. That's fine. There's nothing here that tells me that this wasn't forged. Not that I'm assuming it is, right? I don't know why anybody would want to do that, but I would want to have.
By the book.
Yeah, I want to have attribution.
All right. Is everyone done reading the, the letter?
Yeah. I can always have him join us. I, I actually told him that we are going to have a meeting. I think he's available if you would like to.
I, whatever's convenient for him. I mean, even just calling the city and, you know, or whatever, whatever mechanism the city thinks is appropriate to confirm or is the attribution of these statements from him. Scott, there's probably nothing legal here, right? It's, I mean, the only thing I'm thinking is I just don't, I would want this, I'd want some assurance that this is coming directly from the property owner.
I did forward the email, I think from him directly, these two of them. And they would show it forward, but if you would like, I can get him on the, have him join the meeting now. And you can ask him any questions you would like, or you can call in later, whichever way you'd like.
I, I don't have an opinion either way.
Yeah, probably verify with him later.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
At this point, I think, you know, the, in order to grant variance from that ordinance section, the building official has the ability to grant minor, minor modifications with respect to the screen wall. But to do away with it completely is going to require a request to the zoning board of appeals. So that would be the time when, you know, the neighbor would, would weigh in at that, at that public hearing in front of the zoning board of appeals. But I think his letter tonight for planning commission purposes is more than sufficient.
Dan, and Ramil, we haven't met, but I'm your neighbor as well. I live right across the street from Christopher.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I kind of concur with him. And I think, I think, I can't speak for them, but I think most of the neighbors in, in our area would probably, probably again, support you in that. So I know a lot of people use that green space to walk on and, and so forth. So I, I don't, I don't, you know, you probably have the neighbor's support. Again, can't speak for them, but.
We've discussed it and, you know, we, before I even thought of, before we even, you know, talked about it with the city, we're thinking of maybe putting something nice to where it blocks some more noise from the road and making a knife on both sides. He was thinking of putting some grates on that fence and things like that. And, but that's something that we can also discuss later. Or whichever way. I'm open to it anyway.
The last item to really mention from Jill's letter, Jill and Sri's letters, item 15 about the truck lighting. And the truck lighting, obviously when the truck pulls in, it's got its lights on at the start. But the cab pulls away. And the only lighting left on the, on the mobile unit that's left are facing the building, three lights, one at the, at the pedestrian door and two at the, at the platform that comes up for the wheelchairs. So those are the only lights. There's no light from the trailer at all. That would be my presentation. I think if I could just speak for Ramil, the goal is to allow him to be able to proceed. He, he wants to get open as quickly as possible. This is, we've gone through a lot of planning as to various options for his development of the property now and in the future. And Ramil needs to get his facility open as quickly as he can get granted the approvals for it. So we already have, I guess, to that end, I guess that leads me to the engineering letter from Scott Ringler. And Scott has asked for, he has asked, well, first of all, he wants us to check to make sure the water supply is copper and not lead. And it is. Ramil had his plumber check it out. It can be checked right at the water meter, which it was. So we know that it's copper. The next item, number two from Scott, is a verification from a geotechnical engineer that the right of way is able to hold the MRI. We have contracted with TEC testing engineers and consultants. They are supposed to be out within the next week and they're going to take soil borings on there and elsewhere on the property. So we know exactly what the, what the nature of the pavement is and what the nature of the underground is. And likewise, we've also contracted with Noah and Frost, who would take the results of the TEC. Because he wanted to have a letter as I, I believe, a verification. So we'll get a letter from TEC. But the Noah and Frost is going to prepare engineering drawings for the right of way to make sure that the expansion is designed per city requirements. And is designed based on what TEC tells them as far as the underground requirements. So make sure the asphalt, because it's an asphalt approach now, is, is correct and suitable. So I guess those would be my final comments. And again, like I said, the goal is to get Ramil in as quickly as you would allow him to get in. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Lonnie. I, I'll start out with some questions, things that I, I've heard this evening and also some things that I've jotted down from reviewing the plans. And the first one I wanted to ask is about the MRI. Did I understand correctly that until the business is up and running, that the mobile MRI is, is a potentially somewhat future and that there is an MRI proposed for in the facility itself, in the building itself?
Well, that would be the goal. But at the beginning, you have to have enough points. You have to have enough business. And then once those points are generated, then the state will allow you to actually put in a permanent unit. Now, the goal is to get enough business flowing. Not sure how quick they can get to it, so I don't want to put a timeline on it. But my ultimate goal would be, and there's a nice section in the building where we can create that room. It only will require approximately eight by eight or 10 by 10, I would say, room. And that will be sufficient enough for the actual unit. So my goal would be to get enough business, fill out the points and then remove that truck completely and put an actual unit inside the building.
Okay, so you don't foresee a need to expand the building to accommodate the MRI and with?
Not at all. There's not enough room inside the building. And the unit is not that big, so it will easily fit into the building.
If you look at the building plans that we had attached to there, the existing drawing, the floor plan shows in the northwest corner, if I've got that right, Ramil, that's where the unit would be located.
I don't know how, is it possible to put the interior? Who would be able to do that? Sri, are you able to? Just to show where?
Okay, one moment.
And, and while we have just a second, did you want Sri to go over her presentation as well? Before you guys have in-depth discussion or are you satisfied with Lonnie's presentation at this point?
I guess we would entertain if Sri has anything she would like to add or any emphasis she would like to place on any of the items with on, with, within there. Or if the commission has any questions regarding some of those comments, we would entertain that as well. But let's start with Sri to see if she has anything to discuss.
Lonnie kind of addressed most of the comments in the review letter. So a, a big part of my presentation was done. But maybe after the planning commission is done towards the end, I just wanted to bring your focus to three main considerations. We were looking for your input. One was looking at the hours of operation for the MRI truck. Right now, it says that it could be two days a week. We don't know what two days of the week it's going to be. Just to provide some consistency and some routine for the residents around. And also because the truck, if you can see, it could briefly block Sunnybrook Avenue from access. But fortunately, it happens during non-peak hours. But it, it could help to have some sense of predictability when the truck's going to access the site. If, if the planning commission agreed, that's something they may wish to consider. And the other one, we talked in great detail, the screen wall. I think a minor deviations can be approved administratively by the building official. It's if they're just like Scott said, if they're proposing to remove the whole wall, then they would go to appeals. But if it's a mix of cleaning, then it could be approved by the building official. And we were hoping, wondering if planning commission may wish to provide their recommendations so that the building official can make his determination. And as part of his determination, he can also probably check with the residents and get his input as well. And the third item is the loading. I think Lonnie presented where they're coming from. And I also understand that the MRI truck is a, it could be a temporary use, but we don't know, like, is it here or two or three? But once Ramil starts to fill in the spaces inside, depending on the use, we don't know if they would require any loading use or not. So it, that, that is another item as part of your discussion you may wish to consider. Other than that, I have all the slides here. If you want me to pull any slides up, I can pull those. I can stop sharing now or leave it open, however, whatever's convenient and helpful.
Where should I start? Maybe start with the, with the building. Would you be able to show page 15? So at the moment, the, the main door would be on the left side. Patients with command, they would. Patients with command, they would sign and sit down. And then once they're ready to be taken into the MRI unit, they would go into the corridor that leads with a new door that we're putting, which comes out right where the where the stairs are and where the lift is for the handicap. Now, once, now, I can't put a timeline on it and I don't want to just because, you know, not sure how long it will take me to obtain enough points to put the an actual MRI unit inside the building. But the goal would be to place that MRI unit right where where that door is going towards east, which would be, you know, going towards the hallway of the building in in those two rooms, kind of. Right where the cursor is. I don't know if I can take that cursor, but right in those two rooms, then we'll eliminate the hallway. So there's more than enough space to place that MRI unit once we're ready to, once we're able to get enough points built. Any questions about that? If not, I can move on to the hours.
Go ahead and then move on to.
As far as the hours of operation and which days of the week. Once again, I can't put a timing on it because it all depends on what kind of leasing agreements I can put together. I do have several in place at the moment. Now, depending on the use or, you know, how much need is out there in the in the area. It might be two, three days a week. It might work. Of course, it will be during between the hours of seven oh and, you know, around eight. I don't see it being used any longer than that, even though we have. I think the time was up to eleven o'clock at night, but I don't think we'll ever go to that time. Right now, my other facility, we operate from eight to eight P M, eight A M to eight P M. The unit is usually there and I anticipate two, three days a week at the moment. Not sure if it will extend. There are options to get more days. But I don't see it being happening at the moment. So would like to leave that kind of open depending on what they need is out here. As far as the wall goes, now, I'm open on, you know, to putting the wall. If we are able to somehow get some kind of a leniency so that the neighbors are happy and we can maybe put more greenery out there to block off the, you know, the building from the neighbors. If I can consider that. We're we're open on doing what the city would require. But I also want to accommodate everybody that's nearby and make it as nice as possible.
And if I may, for the for the wall, I have talked to Jim Wright, the building official. And we, he has, he has said that he would be he'd be okay with panels, you know, and stop, you know, stop it, stop at the poles, you know, the the electrical poles or whatever. Stop the poles and then continue on so that there doesn't have to be, you know, there would be a slight break to accommodate those utility poles, but.
Would have to accommodate the guy wires too.
Right.
Where we show it on the drawing because they're they're right in line with the poles.
Sure. So but he, it was that sounded about as far as he was willing to kind of accommodate. I mean, the guy, I mean, obviously factoring into the guy wires too, but we talked specifically about those utility poles, so. Just wanted to let you all know that.
With the greenery around so that it blocks off the rest of the
Right. So so Susie, just to clarify, when he said up to the poles, he's 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 thinking probably more literally is closest you can get practically. That's acceptable to the utility company. And I don't know offhand what that dimension is.
Zero is what he told me.
Yeah, yeah. Zero, in other words.
Still, there's a couple other instances in the city where they've done that. I think that's probably what Jim is referring to. And I would have, and that's kind of what my point earlier was, was that if we're going to do away with large sections of the wall or do away with the walls together altogether, which maybe sounds of the desire of the neighbor and according to Bruce, some of the other residents. But I think that that's probably something that is going to probably should come from the Z B A versus the building official, just just so that for future applicants parcels, we don't open up an avenue where we don't have any more screen walls, whether the neighbors bought them or not, so.
Right. And that's the part I'm trying to wrestle with or entertain here. Because, you know, looking at the picture, which was on the screen briefly, there is, you know, the trees are fairly sizable. It looks like a nice green background that it would seem like a shame to 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 tear out to build a wall because of what that would do to you know, essentially that loss, assuming that loss would have to occur to to get that wall in place. So we would want to know what that avenue is if the commission was to, you know, entertain recommend if it's a if it's a variance. We should probably discuss that. As far as, you know, I'm going to start kind of picking at other little things that I see regarding the plan. I would anticipate that with the increase in the the entryway off of Sunnybrook, that the curbs would be concrete. There wasn't a reference there, and I know it's not an engineering drawing. And I would expect that so long as, you know, if there's asphalt that's called out for for paving, that it's suitable for the loads that are anticipated based on on, you know, the frequent traffic of a of a of a heavier, you know, heavier trailer, both for the parking lot and for the road and, you know, what otherwise might be a city responsibility to be doing repair. And we certainly wouldn't want to to be causing those problems and putting that on the city. I at first had a question about the about the loss of the parking during the maneuvering of the trailer. And I wasn't sure if it was due to the maneuvering of the trailer or if it was a shielding issue and proximity of cars to it. It looked like from the from the sketch that was put up on screen, that wasn't part of the packet that showed the trailer, yeah, the traffic or the or the 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 path for getting the trailer into place, that that's likely part of that, part of that reason.
It's strictly for the exiting of the truck. The the truck can be maneuvered in place. If you look at the darker area that I've got there, the truck can be maneuvered in place without impacting any parking. But when the cab is reattached and pulls the trailer out, that's when those spaces on the left are affected for the five minutes it takes to get that trailer out of there.
Okay, so you first see the trailer coming back out via Sunnybrook versus just by the orientation of the trailer and its position. I'm assuming that it's that it's being attached on from the south end or pulled from the south end as opposed to from the north end.
It's attached in the north end.
It's attached from the north end to the tractor?
Yes.
Okay, so the tractor would pull in, pull in straight. Yep, okay.
Yes.
Yep, okay. So then the backup occurs back to the barrier free parking space symbols and then they pull forward.
Exactly.
Okay, all right. Understand that a little better.
And we'll coordinate to make sure that it's easy.
Right. Well, just at a glance and from the sketch, it appears that it's it's looking like it's it's practical and functional from that regard. So I don't I don't personally have a concern with that. With regard to the comments from the city's planners from Giffords Webster regarding the parking in the corner there. I note that those look like it's an existing parking configuration. Although in some of the drawings, it looks like the lines extend further and that there's an overlap between the twenty foot and the twenty foot. I've seen in the past those a little bit, you know, being done better. But given the nature of what's proposed for this site, my personal feeling on it is that I don't know that it's, you know, it may not be ideal if somebody parks a car, a big, large car there, you know, or tries to get, you know, two cars there. If one's sticking out, it could block somebody. But I don't know if there's any record of complaints or any issues regarding the functionality of that that situation. So I'm not sure if that's something that I would merit as being too critical to approving the plan. You know, you know, or not approving the plan based on that issue. That's that's my take. I'm sensitive to the concept of, as I said, the on the on the screen wall of coming up with a solution that addresses the city's need to not open loopholes that cause a battle every time we need to enforce the need to to install a wall between commercial property and a residential property. That but that still addresses it in a sensitive manner to the to the neighborhood. So I think we can probably come back to that discussion. As far as the functionality of the barrier free ramps and the the access at the new entrance looks a little bit challenging to me with pulling up a ramp and being adjacent to the steps. You know, having the steps kind of drop off to the one side, especially with double doors swinging out. But, you know, that might lend itself to the building official to say whether that's, you know, officially works based on one door staying closed and one door opening out and that the barrier free approaches, you know, meeting the ADA guidelines, which is kind of gets a little bit beyond what the planning commission would be looking at, but.
It does meet ADA guidelines. We checked on it before we did.
Okay, yep. And I see the the representation of the clearances there. So I just, you know, wanted to make sure that 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 was, you know, paid attention to. Because it might it might impact that access path for the for the trailer if it's, you know, otherwise. I assume the stairs that go up to the trailer itself. There's a that there's a platform or there's a walk off inside the trailer. Because I don't see how the two reconcile to each other representationally. It looks like steps lead right up to the side of the trailer and and then there's some sort of platform next to it. So I'm not sure how those function. If there's an explanation that just, you know, clears that up, I'd be interested in hearing it.
Sri, if you can maybe scroll down on our submission faculty, I think there is a trailer shown there.
The steps and the platform are part of the MRI trailer.
Okay.
And they attach and deattach when?
Yeah, it's it's not part of the architectural work at all.
Okay.
I included or we included a packet of the MRI unit itself. And I think it'll show it clearer within that that packet. That's
Up right there.
There, there you go. That's it.
So the the platform is for the handicap to lift up the handicap and put it, you know,
Right.
the handicap can roll in. And when the trailer is ready to move, it falls onto the trailer and and latches on the trailer and the steps are, there's storage underneath the trailer. The steps come out and goes underneath the trailer. So it gets attached and then people can come down and up into the trailer when the trailer is blocked.
Okay, okay. From 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 an architect's perspective, just wanted to make sure that the account had been there for the requirements for clearances to the trailer so that we understand that it's positioned correctly and that it accommodates access to that stair.
In fact, the twenty four inches that's shown, I don't, I mean, I don't know why they're showing only twenty four. We've got, we have more than that to allow someone to walk by.
Right. It does seem like a pinch point, so I just, you know, draw attention to it. And so long as the position of the trailer on the pad still can be accommodated, the clearances that you need are accommodated. We, and your 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 free movement around outside the trailer pad for cars, parking, et cetera, can can function appropriately.
This shows it clearer than the MRI.
Okay.
It looks like we are forty, forty.
Right. Which seems more logical.
We worked very hard with Lonnie to to make it all work.
Yep.
Just to address the loading part, we will have no heavy delivery into the building. There's going to be nothing of a big, no big pallets or anything like that. Maybe some UPS packages, normal UPS packages. Just wanted to bring that up since Sri wanted to, one of us to discuss that. It'll just be a quick drop off and pretty much, I don't anticipate any large pallet deliveries or anything like that into the building.
And I just want to make sure I got this correctly as far as the lighting on the trailer itself. There is no exterior lighting on the trailer?
Correct. It all face it well, only facing the building. There are, there's one on each side of the platform up high and one next to the the door. But there's nothing on the other side.
So.
It would only face the building.
To illuminate, to illuminate the entryways to the trailer.
Exactly.
That corrects. Yeah, okay. So addressing the commission, are there any questions or items that we haven't talked about? And if not, I think we need to, I'm going to suggest that we focus in on what we need to consider regarding the the screen wall between properties.
Yeah, I have several, Mark, being very familiar with the property, all minor. But whoever's controlling the picture, you put that picture back up that you had of the Sunnybrook entrance? Please, thanks, thanks, Sri. So what one one thing in that parking, yep, the other one. You can kind, you can kind of see it here. One thing, oh. It changed again. I mean, there we go. So on the property, there are a few curbs that are completely falling apart. So if you see that rock in the middle behind it, that that curb, it's probably about fifteen inches high, the other side to the right. And yep, right there. And that that that's in in really bad shape. And then on the left side where you were pointing, there is there is a stretch of of curb there that that's fallen apart. And then there's a small one back by the big tree back in the back corner of the lot. So I'd like to see those those repaired as as part of as part of the process. As far as the, you know, the particular days, you know, it's not a deal breaker for me, but it would be great, I think, for the neighbors if 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 you could, you know, to have a consistent schedule so that neighbors could plan. I mean, the, you know, the 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 truck is, I mean, they're not silent. They are going to make some noise. But it'd be great that for neighbors to be able to plan about that.
Oh, definitely coordinate that. I've met the neighbors and I will make sure to coordinate with them.
So I will interject a question here, Bruce, to that to that point, the noise. The noise, when you estimate the sound, is that is that end up being sixty decibels or less? Is that attributable to the sound of the car of the of the truck trailer coming and going? Or is that operation of the Or is that operation of the trailer itself, operation of the MRI?
It's operation of the MRI, and I will have to double check with the leasing company. How they determine that, but. It would, it would have a normal truck noise when it will come in. I don't know how to answer that because I'm not sure, but I think it's for the operation of the MRI. And it's very quiet when it operates.
Through the chair, if I may, does, you know, typically the big trucks kind of make that beeping noise when they're backing out? Yes. Thinking of that when you were making a reference to truck noise, I wasn't sure if this one would make that.
I don't think it does. I use, I have other facilities and it does not make that noise. And they have cameras and everything to to line up the the trailer. And they're pretty professional, though. They'll be in and out of there within three minutes, probably, approximately.
I was gonna say, mo- most trash trucks have a backup sound. And so I think in terms of the pickup and delivery on that front, we've we we have regulations regarding the hours that that's supposed to occur. Not sure that's always. That's lived up to.
Sorry, I had to mute myself. My dogs are going crazy. So the other, one other thing, um, which we we've done on the approval of of several other site plans that I'd like to do here especially is. Is, you know, daily, daily trash pickup, because given the, given the location. You know, this this building is somewhat of a magnet for for trash coming in off of the intersection. The prior owners were not all that great about about cleaning it up. Likewise, another another problem that you'll see, you may have saw, yeah, I think you guys, you think you guys took ownership, what, in August?
Uh, something like that, yeah.
Yeah, and you'll see, there there's an incredible weed problem. On on the property, especially on on the bushes that you can see in the picture picture there and then on the far side of the building. Again, that was something that was was not really taken care of by the the prior owner. I mean, these weeds would get to be six feet tall.
I don't know if you paid attention, but I've had landscapers come out there. At least every other week, and the whole site is cleaned up.
Yeah, yeah, it is, it is, it is much better, but I would want to have that, just just given it's. It's it's tendency for 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 whatever reason for that to be a very weedy property, I would want to get that, you know, in in the site plan as well. As far as the 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 southernmost cut on Southfield Road, I mean, personally, I I would like to see that. You know, the 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 cut, you know, replaced so that people can't come in there. I I have a, I I mean, have a problem with putting a couple of signs up there only because this is something that I I've discussed with council in the past. When you stand in the middle of the road in front of your building and you look south, there are already twenty seven signs. And so, so adding two more would would not would not be a great thing, so personally, I would like to, I would much rather see that closed off. The other, the other issue that you have there too, and this is when I always cringe, is you will see. Cars that actually, some some, a lot of, you'll see, you'll notice this, if you haven't already, a lot of cars will will make an illegal U-turn right in that intersection. But sometimes what people will do is they'll pull in into that little approach there. Because it because it is open, and then they'll back up into Southfield Road, and it's 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 pretty dangerous there, so. You know, we can discuss that, but I I I think it would be better off to close that off if you're not planning on using it than to put up, put up signs.
Just to clarify, though, doing that would require negotiation with the the road commission for Oakland County.
Correct, correct.
If I can jump in on that, um, for future, I would like to leave that open. Eventually, I would like to maybe propose a few other things to the building. And as I discussed with Susan before, maybe do, you know, some additions to it and do a few more things. Not right away, so for that purpose, I would like to leave that driveway there. Until, you know, further, uh, until, until I decide exactly how. I would like the building to look at the end, you know, how I would like to end up with the building. Definitely would put a cement block barrier there and put do not enter signs. If you don't mind, I would like to leave that as is at the moment.
Yeah, or or like you said, a bumper block, you know, one of the ones maybe that's on the the north side of the building, maybe repainted.
There is, there's actually a big, big block.
Right, right, a huge one.
I can definitely move that and paint it yellow color or, you know, uh, so it's visible and then.
Yeah.
Do not enter sign.
Yeah, and or as Lonnie Lonnie suggested, maybe if you do do have to put a sign up, put it on on your own property as opposed to out by the road. Some something like that.
Yeah, I'm not certain what's uh, what's acceptable in terms of putting out on that pavement anyway. I I don't know what the road commission would say about it. I I I I don't like the signs being there. At the same time, I think it needs to be, uh, from a safety standpoint, something that clearly. Announces ahead of time that that's not a drivable path.
Is there any thing that would prevent Ramil from putting the blocks right at the foot of the drive? Now, it's in the right of way, that's the only problem. Do you really need to get Oakland County to say it's okay to put bumper blocks at the driveway there?
I don't know if that's from Oakland County or if that's something that the civil engineer could 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 instruct you on. They they probably would have some knowledge about that. That's just my guess. But they should probably weigh in on that.
Okay.
I I would be surprised if Oakland County Road Commission even noticed that you put blocks at the entrance to that driveway.
Yeah.
Some big, uh, some of those big concrete flower planters make it look nice and and also double as a barricade. And I think everyone would be happy with that.
That's something that Ramil had suggested earlier about. Funny you would say that.
That that goes more towards my thinking of making it noticeable and also, um, you know, not, you know, beautifying it, I guess.
Yeah, and and it takes care of the safety issue too of people turning into their. As opposed to putting the bumper block on the other side of the sidewalk.
Right, on the building side, and then put some pots maybe or however it would work.
I think what vertical barriers would be more efficient than a bumper block, which may not be visible from a driver's eye level.
Right, yep.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yep, and then the only other thing I had on my list is really, really minor. In that, in that, but on the south side, that row of bushes there, there's a. Very long railroad tie to delineate the 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 garden bed there. It's 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 like thirty feet long, forty feet long. You know, and that that could, that could could used to be permanently fixed into the ground and and probably painted. Very minor, but I think.
It's landscape, it's landscape improvement, maybe. Is probably the.
That, right. That's gonna happen, uh, no matter what, I will definitely be improving the property overall. Making sure that everything looks really nice. It's something I have to look at every day. Would definitely like it for, like for it to be looking really nice.
Yeah. Hey, so Scott, let's let's talk a bit about the aspect of the of of the. The screen wall, what would, what would the commission need to consider or advise as far as? Looking at the list of items that. That Bruce just kind of listed off as conditions for approval. The the screen wall component needs to be addressed somehow. And I guess I'm looking for that path forward of how we look at. Trying to, trying to.
Right now, as it's, as it's being proposed, I don't believe, and what Suzie has stated. Tends to support that is I don't believe that the building official is going to grant or consider the proposed screen wall to be. Something under his ability to make a minor modification or grant.
You know, in other words, it's not going to be. Based on what's proposed, it's going to have to be more major than he can make a an acceptance for.
Yes.
Correct, so I think, I think the, if it's, if the applicant intends to proceed with with the screen wall. As has been presented tonight. Or if they're going to. Honor the request of the neighbor and put in a chain link fence, I think they're going to have to go in front of the zoning board of appeals. And make their request to that body. And and looking for that relief, that's not, that's not relief that this body can grant, so. If there were to be any any approvals this evening, they would be subject to obtaining those those necessary variances from the ZBA.
Okay.
So it would be Jim that I would have to discuss that with first, I assume, to be.
I know, that would be a separate application to the zoning board of appeals, um, which is a separate body. It's actually, uh, our city council serves as our zoning board of appeals, but that's a separate application process to them. To request, basically, be an exception to the ordinance is what you would be requesting.
I understand. Um, I'm I'm open to putting the wall the way we prefer, so I'm open to putting the. Wall as the city would like for it to be, uh, also want to be considered to the neighbors. And if you, if we look at the current fence, there's a chain fence there. If we go along that line, we can easily, uh, with like, um, like a wooden fence. Or or a vinyl fence, um, whichever way the city would be okay with. I'm I'm open to anything that we can do here to please the neighbors and and get an approval from the city.
Just gonna say, in this instance, I believe the the requirement is pretty clear that it requires a separation with a wall. And 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 doesn't include. Provisions for for a decorative fence like it might in in other applications. Sherry, correct me if I'm wrong on that.
No, you're, you're, you're correct, Mark, and and again, I think that. If i- if if if, you know, Ramil intends to to do that or is looking at utilizing other things. That the appropriate, again, the appropriate body for that would be the ZBA. There there is some precedent in the city. Some other sites where where the boundary line was heavily wooded. And they were allowed to utilize a different material for for that screen wall, so. I think there there is, there is an opportunity there perhaps. To to. To work with him on that. I I can't speak for this EBA, but I do think that there's there's definitely an opportunity there. Especially because it 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 does seem, I mean, just looking at it, wall, trees, wall, trees. Doesn't really seem to serve the purpose, um, you know, and an existing group of trees like that. Is. Does provide, present some some of a hard, somewhat of a hardship, uh, given that I'm assuming those trees may be on both the adjoining property owners. Property as well as yours, so removal of those trees wouldn't be all. In your ability to do, some of those would probably require the neighbor to take them down. And if the neighbor didn't take them down, you would have a hard time constructing that wall, so definitely, definitely, I I foresee some hardship. And and adhering to the ordinance as it's written, and again, I think that that's something that probably needs to be taken up with the ZBA.
Okay.
Is there a mechanism where Ramil would be able to proceed? Knowing that whatever the ZBA says, he's going to do. I mean, uh, so I guess I'm trying to find a way that that this one issue does not hold him up. If this is the only issue that is, uh, uh, needs to be resolved.
Yeah, so I think what what would what would take place would be if if this body tonight is comfortable with everything else they've looked at. They would make a make a motion to approve the site plan as presented, subject to variances. Necessary variances being obtained from the ZBA to accommodate the screen wall as proposed. Obviously, if the ZBA doesn't grant the request relief, then then he would be required to comply with the ordinance. Which which may require DT to come in and move those poles. In order to put a complete masonry wall, uh, the length of the property line, so that. You know, that that may be something that if if the ZBA doesn't give him the relief request, that that may be something he has to do. Uh, so yes, everything else could proceed, but we'd have to. And that's something that could be worked at, worked out with the building official on how that wall is going to be. Constructed to be in compliance with the ordinance, so again, I don't think it's a. I don't think it's that big of a hurdle to this project. So I, um, you know, there are some additional steps that he needs to go through, but I wouldn't. Wouldn't be too worried about it.
Well, definitely, uh, we'll definitely work on ZBA, we'll work on with Lonnie and the neighbors and ZBA to make sure that. Whatever is approved is is going to be constructed. I personally want the site to look beautiful and, uh, you know, observe with all the. All the, you know, city requirements, so we will, we'll handle everything that has to be handled.
When is the next ZBA meeting? The one that we could get on, I guess.
Thank you for no, I think, thanks for even saying that. Let's see, so the next ZBA meeting, uh, the earliest would be January. Well. We're gonna, let's say, February is probably. February is probably the one that you could get on.
What, why not the council meeting in January?
The January eighteenth one?
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, we would have to have an application in and published by Friday.
Everyone is January twenty fifth.
The January twenty fifth? Oh, yeah, you guys are on the second night.
It's the eighteenth is Martin Luther King Day, so there's no.
You could make it to the twenty fifth. Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, that'll be great. We'll, uh, we'll submit the application on next day or.
Application in by Wednesday.
For Pete's sake, we need, uh, fifteen days, so. I'd say just before the end of the year, I can get to the exact date tomorrow.
Okay, they'll be fine.
With all the, with all the other good information that you're going to want to, so I'll get to that tomorrow.
Okay.
So at this point, the commission we we've got before us, we can entertain a motion to approve the site plan. Or to recommend approval of the site plan contingent on. Addressing the condition of the curbs. The solidifying the days of operation. The days that the trailer is is anticipated to be there. Daily cleanup of the site, trash pickup. Condition of the landscaping, including weeds and the condition of the landscape materials such as railroad ties. And coming up with an acceptable means of of closing off the south curb cut. Whether that's through the, uh, through the road commission or through, uh, you know, an acceptable means. Of providing an attractive and safe means of closing it off. And then ultimately, upon receiving approval of a submitted plan or an agreed to solution. For the screen wall in light of consideration for the neighbor, if that's a possibility. As well as, um, you know, um, I guess the beautification or the maintenance of, uh, the character of the property. Maybe that's, maybe that's a little too, uh, that last item that should be phrased a little differently, but.
Could I ask one question, please? You want the item about the days of the trailer being there. Ramil, are you able to comply with that? Do you know what days the trailer is going to be there?
I would have to say Tuesday to Thursday, just to be on the safe side.
Tuesday through Thursday?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I mean
Thursday, Thursday. It just all depends on the need. So you would, I would have it come based on the need that's there, based on the amount of referrals, based on a need that's in the area. I wouldn't wanna just bring the trailer and park it in it. Super costly, it's a very, very costly thing, so I would like to you know, I would definitely coordinate with the neighbors and make sure that it's comfortable for everybody. But I would not wanna put a restriction on the days that I can operate and the hours that I can operate. Should be open until, you know, but I'll definitely, I'll definitely coordinate with the neighbors to make sure not a nuisance to anybody and I'm not, you know, not bringing in at three o'clock in the morning and disturbing the thieves, you know, I definitely wouldn't wanna do that, but I wanna leave the days open. It depends on the
Yeah, I was just, I was just starting to say, Mark, you know, I when I brought that up, I I I think you know, I know that that would be difficult to have a schedule, but I was I was saying more as a recommendation, but I don't know if other people felt like it should be mandatory versus a recommendation, so I I was bringing it up.
Okay, okay, so we can, we'll strike that as a condition, but I I think the intent there was to just speak to the the sense of, you know, one would think that if the load is gonna get up to where that trailer is there and running full hours, that it's allowed to run under the 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 current business operation limitations, you know, established by Lethrow Village. That it that it would be then kind of a condition for it likely to be, you're getting that much business, it's gonna move inside.
That's the goal.
So. Was there anything else we needed to capture here as far as conditions? I'm speaking to the commission now. Anything I missed, anything we needed to add to this? Before we otherwise we'll entertain a motion on that basis.
All right, I'll I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the following contingencies, first there be an appropriate screen wall, either following the existing zoning ordinance or via variants granted via the ZBA. With the three curbs that are degraded and falling apart repaired or replaced with daily trash sweeps of of the the property with appropriate landscaping, including fixing out, fixing down the the railroad ties, so that they they stay in place and weed control. And then also closing off the south exit off of or entrance exit off of Southfield Road with some type of, you know, decorative planter or blocking mechanism placed either at the edge of Southfield Road or at the, you know, on the west side of the sidewalk, depending on what's what's permitted. And I think that was everything, did I miss anything, guys?
I think that was it. Do we have a second?
A second it.
Hey, those in favor, roll call.
Roll call. Board member Stansberry.
Hi.
Board member Thompson.
Yes.
Board member Fabs.
Hi.
Board member Hammond.
Yes.
Board member Juliesa.
Hi.
Board member Cantor.
Yes.
And Chair Pietrowski.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I just have one last question. For now, I can pretty much, it's it's approved with conditions of those things. It it might take some time for the ZBA and the certain things to be done because we're going into the winter, you know, as far as the wall goes. I assume I will have some time to construct that. Once, once we go through the ZBA.
Yes, of course.
Then we're good, we will submit the application, thank you very much for your time. And looking forward getting into this building and making it look really nice. Thank you.
Welcome to Lethrow Village.
Looking, looking, seeing improvements of yeah, that can help improve the condition of our commercial center.
Yeah.
Commercial strip.
And and my front yard.
We'll, we'll definitely talk as neighbors.
Yeah, welcome, welcome, nice, nice to meet you.
Same here, you're only a block away.
There you go. Well, I'm sure we'll round into each other, thank you all for your time, thank you for sharing this out, and we will work with Lonnie and Suzie and everybody that we will need to, to make sure we comply with everything and get this, get this all fixed up and ready to go. So thank you all for your time again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lonnie.
Okay, thanks.
We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, skip over old business and tabled items, we have none. Any, if anybody has any other matters for discussion, now would be the time to
Yeah, yeah, you skipped oversee.
I skipped oversee.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's an easy one, it's an easy one, the calendar for next year, the calendar. So, um I did not notice any holiday conflicts, I think council got all of those. But, so here we are, we're and until further notice we're gonna be meeting remotely. I don't, I, you know, that changes kinda like whenever, so, um but this is, this is the, this is the schedule of meeting dates, so if you would make a motion to approve those dates. Then we can carry on with the rest of it.
All right, everyone has seen the dates, I know I've checked my calendar and and I know what I know at this point, there's some days I might, I might have to miss that, you know, I'll know that in the future. But let's entertain a motion to approve the dates proposed for twenty twenty one.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed twenty twenty one meeting dates of the planning commission.
Second.
Second.
Those in favor? Roll call.
Roll call, board member Thompson.
Yes.
Board member Fabs.
Hi.
Board member Hammond.
Yes.
Board member Juliesa.
Yes.
Board member Cantor.
Yes.
Chair Pietrowski.
Yes.
And board member Stansberry.
Yes.
Board, uh, motion carry.
Thanks. Uh, so, moving on to, as I said, no, no old business or tabled items tonight. Other matters for discussion, if anybody has anything they want to raise before the commission.
Suzie, are are there any commissions that are expiring in twenty twenty one?
Oh, why did you have to ask me that, and I didn't have my, 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 uh my spreadsheet up.
You don't.
I know mine expires.
I have a sheet here, Suzie, but you know
Oh, well then that's a question for that.
In twenty twenty one, May of twenty twenty one, Jason Hammond and also board member Juliesa. So those are the two for twenty twenty one. Oh, and also, yeah, in yours as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So you should, we should probably be, yeah, so we should be planful of when you want to get the word out, Suzie, for, to open it up to other residents.
Am I to, am I to infer that you don't wanna be here anymore?
I think we decided last night, we're gonna require everyone.
It's always good to have a change of the guard, I'm sure there are others who are pining to replace us, so.
Are you sure?
Well, I'm, 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 I'm gonna do my darndest to convince them.
Well, then we're gonna work you hard until May, how's that?
She's being polite and that I'm I'm keeping her up too late.
Oh, no.
Or maybe for the wrong reasons.
Well, there, you know, it's 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 always good to get new perspective on anybody like this, so I, I, I think we we should, there should always be a bit of a changing of the guard. So, I don't know when you begin to announce that, Suzie, I suspect, you know, maybe March. So that we give residents, other residents, an opportunity to participate if they do indeed want to.
Right, yes, we will make those, we will, we will make those announcements. Probably, your your timing's probably about right. And should you want to continue on, you can always apply, right?
Yeah, free apply.
Free apply.
And Bruce's, his won't expire until November twenty twenty one.
Okay.
Excellent.
So we'll move on to, if there's no other matters for discussion, we'll move on to legal update.
So last, so last week or two weeks ago that you guys all, everyone got a copy of the draft ordinance for the recreational marijuana, medical marijuana licensing and zoning, so I'm still waiting to get all your comments back on that. If anyone has, I know Bruce has sent over some of his comments, but looking for all of your feedback as well. So feel free to send it to myself and Jill when, at your leisure. That's all I've got for tonight.
Okay.
We got anything else?
At the moment, I'm good.
Okay, staff update.
Um, well, I included in your packet the brochure for the city's MLK Day celebrations. We are, we're gonna be doing a couple of different things, we are gonna be having a citywide food drive, which lasts from December fourteenth to January eighteenth. We are gonna have, we're gonna have we're gonna, there's a drop off location at City Hall. I am gonna be working to identify at least four different businesses. That'll serve as drop off locations for that, we're gonna kinda do like a friendly competition, city's been kind of sectioned off into four quadrants, and there's also going to be fill the truck is part of this on January eighth and sixteenth. And all of this is gonna go toward to benefit lighthouse. And then there's also going to be a community experience journal. And so there's gonna be a variety of ways for residents to participate in this video submissions, written, written word, art, social media posts, and the whatnot, so. Please check out that that brochure, it's got a lot more details and information than I could possibly give you. And then the only other thing I have from the TDA's perspective is that unfortunately we had to cancel our winter market, but we did extend our business bingo until this upcoming Monday, so you still have just under a week to fill your business, your business bingo cards. And drop them off to me at City Hall, and it can be entered to win a contest for a prize for participating, so you should all do it, go support our businesses, and even if it's not for business bingo, do it anyways because they deserve our love. And that's it.
Thanks, Suzie.
Mark, I got an update for infrastructure.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll I'll keep it quick, cuz I know people are anxious to get out of here, but we've been working a lot over the last couple of months on infrastructure, we've got some state mandated infrastructure improvements that we have to make, as well as a lot of other infrastructure issues that that are getting to the point where they can't be ignored any longer. So we're, we're working on, actually, I just finished the the second draft of of a recommendation to city council to, for for a capital improvement bond to improve a variety of things, including and and basically fund things like, you know, replacing any any lead lines that we find in the city. As well as identifying lead lines in the city, which is actually an expensive process, every house has to be checked, not only inside, but also at the stop box out near the sidewalk, which requires digging down five feet, so. There's a lot of expense and and then potential expense if we find lead associated with that. We have a huge issue with water loss, we have for the, you know, for 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 many years, but it's it's gotten bigger and bigger where where we're, we're, we buy water from Saquon and about forty percent of what we buy does not get billed out to residents, so that's a huge expense for the city, we believe the problem is due to our aging water meters, which tend to become less accurate and under report as as they get older, so we're we're doing a a testing program right now to test some of the meters, and if we confirm that, then we will have to fund replacing all the, all the water meters in the city, which obviously is quite a job and and has some expense to it. We just got done televising our thirty thousand feet of our sewer system. And based on that, we're budgeting about half a million dollars of repairs over the next four years. Our sanitary retention tank over on eleven and Evergreen, in order for us to remain in in compliance with the consent decree that we're under. We've got about a half a million dollars of repairs that need to be done fairly soon. As everybody knows, the the road bond was approved by the voters, and as a result, that becomes the opportune time to replace water meters as we were, I'm sorry, replace water mains as we replace the roads, because it's significantly cheaper to put in new water main when the road is torn up, as opposed to doing it after you have a road in place. So we're looking at, you know, doing a fair amount of of water main replacement and funding that. Our fire hydrants are about a hundred and sixty of them need to be replaced or refurbished. Our gate valves for our water mains, so when we have a water main break, the ability to to turn off the water is almost non-existent at this point, because the gate valves are ninety years old and don't work. So water mains, when they break, tend to be a lot more costly and a lot more dangerous to fix. And, yeah, so that's, that's, that's the brunt of it, there's a few other minor things that I won't bore you with, but so we're, we're looking to take out a capital bond, or we're recommending, I should say, to council to take out a capital bond to pay for these, pay for these improvements and these these fixes, and and that recommendation will more than likely go to council next Monday, assuming our our meeting tomorrow goes well and everybody is in agreement to signing off on the recommendation, so.
Okay, some of us got a preview of that, those on the on the CIP committee just before this had a study session and got introduced to some of that information. But it's a good tidbit, since it's a significant part of the capital improvements plan. And is part of being in a, you know, an aging community.
Yeah, it does, it does
Infrastructure wise.
Yeah, it does take a lot of, a lot of items off of the capital improvement plan, should we get this in. And if we do do this and it does get approved, we will be doing a lot of work in the city over the next three years.
And homeowners, how much will the homeowners be patching their lawns?
Well, that, 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 you you mean for the stop boxes?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that, that, that's, we, we've included in in that estimate for that particular project, not only the the landscape repair for what gets damaged, but then also there will be instances where the sidewalk has to be broken up a little bit, and the sidewalk, you know, the city will be paying for the repairs as well.
Right, yeah, yeah, I'm thinking of my house, I don't even know where it is exactly, it's not showing. And I've got a bit, a tree, so that's probably in proximity to where they dig and I'm sure that's not in the same, same condition for others in the community as well.
Yeah, and again, if those, if if that project is approved, then we'll, we'll also simultaneously replace the stop boxes, cuz those are all seventy years old or more. And most of the, many of those don't work or don't function very Because those are all seventy years old or more, and most of the, many of those don't work or don't function very well, or when you try to use them, they break.
Yeah, not the position you wanna be in when you've gotta shut. Shut it off for other other work, yeah.
Exactly.
So, okay. Thanks for that update. So. Not hearing anything else, we have a motion for adjournment.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Those in favor, last roll call.
Let's do it. Without roll call, let's just do it.
No roll call needed.
Yeah, we don't do a roll call on.
Good, it's consensus.
All right, have a good night, everybody.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night, have a great holiday.